Good afternoon. Welcome to a joint meeting of the House Finance and Senate Ways and Means Committee. We are going to start this meeting with a couple of remarks by myself as the chair. So just so all folks in the room and also listening on TVW know, this meeting will conclude at 1:30 PM. For testifiers, each testifier will have two minutes to speak. In general, the chair will seek to alternate between hearing those from who support the bill as well as those who oppose. We are asking that folks are respectful during this meeting, use respectful language when testifying, and for the audience members to be respectful of those who are testifying. Clapping, booing, or other expressions of support or opposition will absolutely not be permitted. The use of visual props or aids when testifying will also not be permitted. And please know that the first few seats are reserved for folks who have been called up to testify, and they will be able to sit there until the people before them have concluded their remarks. With that, we are going to move into a bill briefing. I'm going to turn to Tracy Taylor.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Berg, Chair Robinson, members of the House Finance and Senate Ways and Means Committees. I am Jeff Mitchell, staff with Senate Ways and Means here with Tracy Taylor, staff with House Finance to brief Initiative 2111, which relates to a prohibition on state and local taxes. By way of background, the state constitution authorizes the initiative process, allowing the people to place a proposition directly on the ballot or to submit a proposed law to the legislature for consideration. If an initiative to the legislature is certified, the legislature must take one of the following three actions: adopt the initiative as proposed, in which case it becomes law without a vote of the people; reject or take no action on the measure; under either case, the measure will automatically appear on the ballot at the next state general election; or propose an alternative measure, in which case the initiative and alternative will both appear on the ballot as competing measures at the next state general election. By way of additional background, the federal tax code defines gross income as all income from whatever source derived, including but not limited to items such as compensation for services, business income gains from dealings in property, interest, rents, royalties, dividends, and annuities, to name a few. And then as some final background, some of you may recall that the Court of Appeals in 2019 invalidated a statute that prohibited cities and counties from levying a tax on net income. The court ruled that the enacting legislation containing the tax prohibition violated the single-subject rule under the state constitution. The state Supreme Court did not accept review. I will turn it over now to Tracy to describe the initiative and fiscal note.
Initiative 2111 prohibits the state, counties, cities, and other local jurisdictions from imposing a tax on any form of an individual's gross income. The initiative adopts the definition of gross income in the federal tax code. The effective date of the initiative would be 90 days after the adjournment of the session in which the initiative is passed. There is a fiscal note available in EBB. The Department of Revenue notes that the Washington does not tax an individual's personal income, and in addition, the fiscal note assumes that the initiative is prospective only and does not repeal any existing taxes imposed by the state of Washington or any municipality. As a result, the fiscal note shows that there is no impact to state or local revenues. The only agencies that received a fiscal note for expenditures was the Department of Revenue and the Attorney General's Office, and both indicate that they would not incur any expenditures related to the implementation of Initiative 2111. That concludes our remarks.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Tracy. We are going to open it up for some questions. I just want to start. So just from my understanding, does this impact any existing taxes or any existing tax structures, statutes?
Madam Chair, there is nothing in the initiative that explicitly suggests that there is an impact to existing taxes. The text of the initiative contains no language evidencing whether or not this applies retroactively. Moreover, the initiative does not affirmatively amend or repeal any existing tax statutes. There is a rule of statutory construction that the courts disfavored implied repeals of existing laws. Therefore, based on these grounds, it is more likely than not a court would determine that the initiative applies only to future enacted taxes and does not implicate any existing state or local taxes.
Thank you so much. Representative Street.
Thank you, Chair Berg. If I understand your comments correctly, you talked about the text of the initiative. Does that also apply to the title of the initiative as well?
Correct. The title of the initiative is an act relating to establishing that neither the state or any of its political subdivisions may charge an individual person a tax based on personal income. The initiative only adds a new section and creates a new chapter in Title I of the RCW. There are no additional sections in the title amending, noticing that there is an amendment or repeal of any existing state statutes.
Senator Peterson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Jeff, I'm curious about the definition of income in the initiative. If you were drafting a bill and you wanted to borrow a definition from another jurisdiction, how would you normally do that?
We would normally specifically identify the statute, including a date and time.
Okay. And is there such a date and time included in this initiative?
The definition ties to the federal tax code definition of gross income, but there is no date with it.
Okay. And without that limitation of a particular date, what are the risks of the different approach that this initiative is taking?
So under our state constitution, legislative authority is vested in the legislature, and it has been held unconstitutional for the legislature to hand off its legislative function to other entities. So more specifically, the state Supreme Court has ruled that an attempt to incorporate future changes in federal laws or regulations is an invalid delegation of legislative power. So in the context of Initiative 2111, the reference to the federal definition of gross income is not tied to a specific date, as I mentioned. Therefore, the state statute would be based on the future judgment of the federal government without state legislative approval, potentially violating this principle. With that being said, I want to remind committee members that legislation is presumed constitutional, and the burden is upon the challenger.
Thank you so much. Any further questions from our committee? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move into our public hearing. Vice Chair Street.
Our first testifier will be Steve Ewing. Chair Berg, Chair Robinson, members of the committees, excuse me, for the record, Steve Ewing with the Department of Revenue. I do not have any prepared remarks, but as DOR furnished the fiscal note for I-2111, I'm happy to answer any questions about it if there are any.
Representative Ramel.
Thank you, Chair Berg, and thanks, Mr. Ewing, for being here today. So if I'm reading this right, the fiscal note shows no reduction in revenue to either state or local government. Just wondering if you can walk us through the analysis behind that conclusion.
Yes, thank you. Representative Ramel, the fiscal note is zero because the initiative would not repeal or otherwise impact any existing taxes or charges. It would only limit future taxes on broad-based income, like those broad income taxes imposed on natural persons by the federal government and by other states. To read the initiative as doing anything more than that would raise significant issues. Staff already alluded to those, primarily that it's a basic principle that a statute should not implicitly repeal other statutes. The Washington Supreme Court has said as much in past cases. The initiative does not set out or mention any statutes in the language, and to read the initiative as silently repealing existing taxes would raise serious questions about whether it's constitutional under Article II, Section 37 of the state constitution, which requires amended statutes to be set forth in full.
Thank you so much. Any further questions for this testifier? And thank you, Mr. Ewing, for making yourself available to the committee for this one.
Thank you.
With that, we are going to continue with public testimony. I do want to read a few ground rules that I failed to read at the beginning. As you can see, we've got a full house, so in order to accommodate as many people who wish to testify as possible, I'm respectfully urging my committee members to hold their questions from this point forward. Many folks have signed up to testify today, and we will not have time to hear from everybody signed in. I do encourage you to submit written testimony if you are not called upon to testify. You will have 24 hours with which to submit that written testimony. I also want to remind everyone that today's hearing is being broadcast on TVW as well as being livestreamed. So before we get started with some of our remote participation, some folks are in this room, but some folks are joining us remotely. Regardless of how you participate, you must be recognized by the chair before speaking. If remote members wish to ask a question or provide comment during the meeting, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Participants in the room must use their microphone when speaking so that it will broadcast to Zoom for any remote participants. The camera in the room will switch to whoever is actively speaking. If there is noise coming from your microphone, you will display as the active speaker in the live video stream. For this reason, you should only turn on your microphone when the chair calls upon you to speak. Please turn off your microphone once you have finished speaking. As testifiers are called upon to provide testimony, the chair will also call the names of the folks on deck to testify. When the vice chair in this scenario calls you to provide testimony, remote testifiers will be promoted to panelists to give their testimony. Please click the "Join as Panelist" pop-up. During this time, your connection will indicate that you are rejoining the meeting, and you may experience a slight audio disruption for two to three seconds. After staff transitions you to Zoom, please turn on your audio and your video. In-person testifiers should come up to the testimony table, and all testifiers need to clearly state their name and organization for the official record. Vice Chair Street.
We will start testimony with a panel consisting of Jim Walsh, who I believe is in person, Steve Gordon, and Elizabeth Huvde, who are both remote. Representative Walsh.
And as folks are coming to the testimony table, just want to remind you, you'll have two minutes on the clock.
I'll try to keep it to that, Rep. Berg. Well, thank you, Chairs Berg and Robinson, and ranking members Orkut and Wilson, and everyone else who's here, and thank you for letting me testify in support of Initiative 2111. For the record, my name is Jim Walsh. I'm a state representative from the 19th District. I'm also the person who filed Initiative 2111 with the Secretary of State. Initiative 2111 is designed to do one thing, and that is codify in law the state's longstanding tradition of not having an income tax based on personal income. It's been drafted narrowly so that it only applies to personal income. It does not apply to any other sort of tax, as you've heard in some of the staff's briefing. And also, it is designed really to support the good traditions fiscally of this state. We have a system, a three-legged stool, a property tax and sales tax and a business and occupation tax. And the spirit of this initiative, of this legislation, is to focus on that good system and to not cloud our fiscal policy with other sorts of proposals. It's also important, I believe, that we codify this language, because we have heard from some people who would advocate for a state tax based on personal income, that they may use other tax policy maneuvers in order to set a frame in which a personal income tax would be a state policy. So it's a good policy. It's a good proposal. It emphasizes the best part of our fiscal house, and I ask you to pass it along, execute it out of your committee, your committees, and to a vote so that it becomes law as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Walsh. Please begin.
Hi. Steve Gordon, on behalf of Concerned Taxpayers of Washington State in support of 2111. Our organization is oftentimes inaccurately portrayed as anti-tax, but we really are advocating for policies and for candidates that deliver value for those tax dollars. And so I'm honored to be here today. I really am glad that this body has decided to go forth with hearings and hear some of the cross-section of the over 450,000 people that signed this initiative. Although realistically, this initiative should be unnecessary, given that both constitutional precedent and the people have been very clear on multiple occasions. Washingtonians do not want an income tax. However, obviously, 450,000 people decided that they needed to make that message clear. And with the polling that I'm sure many of us have all seen, this has been popular, and if you look at the pros and cons for signing today, it's overwhelmingly folks in favor of this. So why is this initiative necessary? Well, it's because taxpayers don't necessarily feel that they're getting value in return for their tax dollars. Crime is up, and educational attainment is down. Homelessness and addiction deaths have skyrocketed, while affordability for the basic families has moved further out of reach. Again and again, the response from Olympia has often been, if we just had more tax dollars this time, we could really fix it. Well, taxpayers are waking up to the fact that the problem isn't more money for government, it's a need for better policy. So this lack of trust is really the reason that this initiative is necessary and why it's supported by so many Washington taxpayers. The people want to say as clearly as possible, enough is enough. Give us control of our checkbook back from the state. Thanks for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Street.
Our next testifier will be Elizabeth Huvde, online. She will be followed by Marcy Bowers, who I believe is in person. Feel free to come up to the staging area, followed by Charles Mayer and Lindsey Schromen-Warwin.
Please begin, Elizabeth.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Huvde with the Washington Policy Center. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today with such a full docket. Adopting this initiative would show respect for workers who have turned down an income tax nearly a dozen times and give them confidence that at least one tax that penalizes work will be kept off the table. Many workers could use that surety, helping the state continue to be an attractive place to live and work, not just an attractive place to go hiking. With recent payroll tax eating at people's wages, earnings do not feel protected. As a worker and a single mom who has had to make ends meet in difficult times, I was always grateful the state did not have both an income and a sales tax. I preferred a sales tax, as I was limited in what I could spend. The sales tax serves us well. If it didn't, we wouldn't see government spending continually growing, along with budget surpluses. Given those budget surpluses, state residents should be realizing broad-based tax relief, as have the citizens of more than a dozen other states in recent years. I'm happy to offer you a list of those efforts. Even in times of inflation and budget surplus, such tax relief has not been a consideration here. Thanks for your time. I thought I'd only have a minute, so I'll give you back your time for other people here today.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. Vice Chair Street.
Marcy Bowers, please come up. Marcy will be followed by Charles Mayer and Councilmember Schromen-Warwin.
Please begin.
Good afternoon, members of the committees. For the record, my name is Marcy Bowers. I'm the executive director of the statewide Poverty Action Network. We work to ensure that all Washingtonians can meet their basic needs and have opportunities to prosper. I'm testifying in opposition to 2111 today, and I'm opposing this bill, we are opposing this bill rather, because it doesn't do anything for Washingtonians and the people of Washington. Our state continues to have one of the most upside-down tax codes in the nation, where those with the least pay the most. Furthermore, our insufficient and upside-down revenue structure means that we often lack the resources to adequately invest in strategies to lift families out of poverty, while also funding our education programs to educate and grow future generations. What we need is public investments to lift people up and to fund our basic safety net infrastructure. What we don't need is to spend time debating proposals like this that are so vaguely worded that they don't actually do anything. Our time should be spent making changes to the tax code that benefit the people and families who need the support the most. We were heartened to see that this initiative doesn't mess with important programs like paid family medical leave or other programs that support our communities. And yet, given that child poverty has again jumped following the expiration of COVID-era supports and investments, now is not the time to put revenue, our revenue structure, at risk. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Charles, you can begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Berg, Chair Robinson, and members of the Finance and Ways and Means Committee. My name is Charles Mayer, and I'm a family physician and here representing Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility. I am testifying against I-2111. Washington is a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. We all deserve to live healthy lives and have access to the things we need: to be able to see a doctor when you're sick, buy and eat healthy food, and have a warm place to sleep at night. In my work, I see many people who don't have these things because our tax code is upside-down and broken. With a second-most regressive tax code in the nation, we demand the most from those with the least ability to pay, like some of my patients. We need more tools to fix this problem, not fewer. One patient of mine, I'll call her Denise, lacked resources growing up and lived on the financial margins as an adult. She also suffered from diabetes and hypertension, which led her to kidney disease and eventually a kidney transplant. One week, she had to decide between buying groceries and paying her co-pay for the anti-organ rejection medications. Reasonably, she decided to postpone picking up her medications until she got her paycheck. Unfortunately, she became quite sick and was hospitalized. She made it, but it was a terrible week for her and a costly one for all of us. This proposal does nothing to help Denise. In fact, this proposal does nothing at all. Everyone already knows we don't have an income tax. The policy before you does not change that. It does nothing to increase investments in the programs that help people live healthy lives. I urge this legislature to spend time on the things that make meaningful health differences to the people of Washington and not this do-nothing proposal. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Street.
Well, next here from Councilmember Schromen-Warwin. They will be followed by Colin Hathaway, Mark Johnson, who I believe is in person. If so, feel free to come up to the staging area, and Jason Mercier. Please proceed, Councilmember.
Thank you, Chair Berg, senators, and representatives. My name is Lindsey Schromen-Warwin. I serve as a city council member in Port Angeles. I'm testifying other on this measure. Every year, the city of Port Angeles tries to maintain our streets and parks, pay family wages to retain our staff, and plan for improvements to better serve our residents' health, safety, and welfare. Every year, we try to do more with less because we have a structural budget deficit caused by the legislature interfering with our local fiscal authority and thus our democracy. But adequate revenue isn't the only issue, since almost all of the revenue tools the state makes available to us make life harder for our poorest residents. For poor communities like ours, where decades of disinvestment have left us unable to afford to address our community's needs, also, we need the state to step up and raise revenue from the ultra-wealthy individuals and corporations throughout Washington State that are able to pay what they owe to help rebuild our community. That is why for the last four years, our city council has unanimously put the state tax structure as a top priority in our legislative agenda. Our community needs it to be adequate and not regressive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Street.
Our next panel is Colin Hathaway, Mark Johnson, and Jason Mercier. Mark, feel free to start since you're here in person unless you would not like to and would like to have someone else go.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Mark Johnson, representing the Washington Retail Association. We have over 4,500 storefronts throughout the state of Washington in all 49 legislative districts, all 39 counties, and most municipalities. 90% of my members are small businesses with 50 or fewer employees. 10%, yes, are the larger businesses. They represent about 90% of all retail industry in the state of Washington. I'm here truly on behalf of those smaller members that are employing individuals in their communities, that are collecting business and occupation taxes, excuse me, paying business occupation taxes, collecting sales taxes, paying workers' compensation fees, unemployment insurance fees. But then to add an income tax for them and their employees in the state of Washington is just not the right direction to go, either at a local or a state level. So we strongly encourage these committees to support this legislation and pass Initiative 2111, especially for those smaller retailers in your home communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Street.
Colin, please proceed.
Thank you. Thanks, committee members. My name is Colin Hathaway. I own both a residential roofing company and a plumbing and air conditioning business. In the last five years, our companies have created over 200 well-paying and new blue-collar jobs in Washington State, and I will vote yes on Initiative 2111. I would encourage you to do the same for two reasons. One, our income tax structure attracts skilled and unskilled workers alike while encouraging employers to grow in Washington and often relocate here. This leads to job creation, enlarges the workforce and the corresponding tax base, and encourages reinvestment in Washington State businesses. Number two, between 2010 and 2022, Washington's tax-funded budget increased 139% from $26 billion to $62 billion with our existing tax structure, while the population increased just 13%. That's 110% more budget dollars per citizen in 12 years. We have more than enough funding to run Washington without taxing our citizenry more. We need leadership, accountability, and better stewardship of our tax dollars. The introduction of an income tax would eliminate a hiring advantage. It would reduce reinvestment in planning people, and it would lead to a net immigration away from Washington. We're already seeing this with the introduction of the recent and grossly misconstrued excise tax on capital gains income. Please vote yes on 2111. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Street.
Jason Mercier will be next. He will be followed by Maggie Humphries, Andrea Omen, and Dylan Grunben-O'Neil, who are all remote. Tim Imman and Anthony Mixer will follow. They can feel free to come up to the staging area. Jason, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a member of the joint committee, for the record, Jason Mercier, and I'm Vice President and Director of Research for the Mountain States Policy Center. I'd like to thank you for holding the hearing today on Initiative 2111. This policy would implement the clear and consistent intent of Washington voters to prohibit an income tax. Now, there's a common belief in the state that the state constitution already does this, but underneath the Uniformity and Property clauses, an income tax up to 1% in uniform could be imposed by government officials. This policy would fully close that door prohibiting an income tax of any kind at the state and local level, assuming, of course, the plain meaning of words are honored, like what happened recently with the capital gains income tax. For years, the State Department of Commerce has advertised Washington's lack of an income tax as being in a competitive advantage. This is something the State Department of Commerce used to market to employers across the world, saying, "Come to Washington. Our lack of an income tax will put you at an advantage above your competitors." Now, we believe that along with acting on Initiative 2111, we'd encourage the state officials to take that protection of that competitive advantage a step further and place this policy directly into the state constitution. This is something that we've recently seen other non-income tax states like Texas and Tennessee do. They adopted these constitutional amendments to clearly signal to their residents and employers that an income tax would never be imposed in those states. With Washington voters rejecting an income tax ballot measure 10 times and now qualifying Initiative 2111, it is the time for Washington to yet again fully ban an income tax, and we encourage you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Street.
Maggie, it looks like you're actually here in person, so please begin, and you'll be followed by Andrea and Dylan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committees. My name is Maggie Humphries, here with Moms Rising, testifying with other concerns on 2111. To start, I want to name that Initiative 2111 is vaguely worded and appears to change nothing in our current tax code or any of the programs that help people in our state live healthy and happy lives. I'm glad to hear from staff and other experts that this initiative won't affect our state's popular paid family and medical leave program. Washington's paid family and medical leave program has been a game changer for families. In the last fiscal year alone, 173,000 Washingtonians have been able to take leave, while the program has paid out $1.3 billion in benefits that have gone back into our local economy and kept families afloat. I want to emphasize that it's not just new parents who benefit from this program, which is a common misconception. It also covers leave for a worker's own health or to care for family. My own mom was able to use PFML to help my brother and his family go through a hospitalization and prepare for a deployment to help with the war in Ukraine. This precious time that PFML allows for, whether it's a new dad seeing his baby's first smile, a daughter holding the hand of her dying a daughter holding the hand of her dying parent.
Maggie, can I interrupt you for one second? I just want to make sure that we're on the same page just to speak to underlying bill. Just the pure tax piece of that, if you could just keep it into those constraints. And I also realize I started the time relate, so, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. While we're very grateful that this vital program that hundreds of thousands of families have benefited from will not be impacted by Initiative 2111. We have concerns about how this initiative will impact the future ability for our, for families to thrive, and we hope that the legislature will invest its time in initiatives and efforts that increase the livelihood and opportunities for families. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maggie. Vice Chair Street.
Andrea, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Berg and members of the committees. My name is Andrea Omen, and I'm testifying with some concerns on I 2111 today. As I've heard from many people and as I've read, there were concerns that it would eliminate programs like Washington's paid family and medical leave that I'm taking advantage of right now. The vague wording makes it hard to know for sure, but I'm told that it won't affect that, and I'm hoping that that's the case. I've been a proud resident of the Washington State for the last 18 years and have been working for almost two decades in tech talent acquisition. Last year, I was laid off in the middle of a high-risk pregnancy, and I panicked. The thought of job searching and interviewing while healing and caring for a newborn seemed impossible. That's when I realized I had access to the vital safety net that is paid family and medical leave, and I hope that it will stay intact. Knowing that I was financially supported during this time has been a lifesaver. My husband was also able to take time to care for me and our baby and bond with her in these first few months. I can recuperate. I can establish breastfeeding without trying to show up to job interviews still bleary-eyed and bleeding in efforts to not lose our family home. And I feel much better positioned to make the most of my job search efforts and find the next step in my career, where I will be able to pay taxes whether we decide to institute an income tax or not. None of this would be possible without state-run paid family medical leave, and that's made possible by the taxes that we raised today. This is why I'm so glad to hear that paid family medical leave and other important programs will be impacted by this bill. And from what I hear, it doesn't seem to have any impact on Washingtonians like me at all. I hope the legislature will spend the rest of its time in this session on proposals that make a difference for Washingtonians like me instead of vague proposals like this that don't really produce any impact. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Street.
Our next testifier will be Dylan Grunben-O'Neil. They will be followed by Tim Iman and Anthony Mixer. If they're here in person, feel free to come up to the staging area. Dylan, please proceed.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Dylan Grunben-O'Neil, and I'm a senior policy analyst with the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy, or ITEP. Initiative 2111 is unnecessary and unhelpful toward the goal of a more balanced, adaptable, sustainable tax code. In our report titled Who Pays?, we measure the extent to which state and local taxes either mitigate or worsen economic disparities between families at different income levels. For years, Washington had the most upside-down, regressive tax code in the nation, meaning state and local taxes in Washington did the most of any state to widen the gaps between the rich and the rest of us. This year, Washington finally moved up to the second-most regressive state, but effective tax rates for middle-income families continued to be more than double and for low-income families more than triple those paid by the richest Washingtonian. In fact, in that report, we look at taxes on people in seven income ranges in all 50 states and the three, so that's 357 individual income groups. Rich Washingtonians don't just pay lower taxes than all other Washingtonians. They pay the ninth lowest tax rate of all 357 of those groups, lower than they would pay in almost any other state and lower than low- and middle-income families in every state. Conversely, low-income Washingtonians pay the sixth-highest rate out of all 357 of those groups. The progress that Washington has made on this front was achieved through innovative policy changes, particularly the Washington, excuse me, the Working Families Tax Credit and Capital Gains Excise Tax, which is also generating $1 billion per year for schools. Putting prohibitions in place that close off the people's ability to act under representatives could hamstring future efforts to improve the state's upside-down tax code, to find revenue for shared priorities, and to adapt that tax code to an ever-changing economy. Thank you again, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Street.
Well, next go to Anthony Mixer, who's here in person, followed by Tim Iman, who I assume is remote. They will be followed by Kai Smith, who I believe is in person. Feel free to come to the staging area, and then Sharon Chen.
All right, well, greetings, Chair Berg and members of the House Finance Committee and Senate Ways and Means Committee. I'm Anthony Mixer, representing the Washington State Young Republicans, and we are for this initiative because we believe in a prosperous Washington. With the passage of the capital gains tax, which I will remind certain members is an income tax according to IRS standards, we need better language set in statute. This initiative will simply streamline the current ban on income taxes here in Washington by adding simple language to RCW Title I, including defining what income means. In part, a 2023 article from the Tax Foundation states that our constitution contains a Uniformity Clause that puts strict limits on property taxes, while, under a voter-approved amendment adopted in 1930, defined property extremely broadly to include, and I quote, "everything, whether tangible or intangible, subject to ownership," unquote. Case law holds that this definition encompasses income. So for reference, that Uniformity Clause is found in Article VII, Section 1 of the state constitution. Thank you for the time. Our organization asks that you pass this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Street.
I have been told that Tim Iman is not online, so we will move to our next panel of Sharon Chen and Kai Smith. Is Kai here? Perfect. Let's start with in-person testimony and then move to remote testimony.
Chairs and members of the committee, thank you. My name is Kai Smith. I'm a partner at Pacifica Law Group, where I represent clients on a broad range of issues, including public entity representation and constitutional law. Including in my practice, I regularly litigate, draft, and advise on ballot measures. I'm here to testify today with concerns about Initiative Measure 2, 2111. First and foremost, as we've heard from other testimony today, the initiative is unnecessary and will have no demonstrable impact on the tax law today or Washington taxpayers today. It is well-known that Washington State does not have an income tax, and the measure does not purport to and does not, in fact, change any existing tax. Furthermore, because income is considered property under the Washington Constitution, any tax on income would need to comply with the uniformity and levy requirements of the state constitution. In addition, the measure is poorly written and confusing. The chosen language is vague in some places and, as some of the questions from members here have asked, overly broad in places, in particular, in how it defines the term "income." That brings me to my final and perhaps most important point. If this measure were to move to the ballot, voters may be misled into thinking that they are voting on something that would have a material impact today, when in fact, this measure, if enacted, would have no impact on our tax code or taxpayers today. It is perplexing to me that proponents would have spent millions of dollars to qualify this measure for the ballot when the measure, in fact, does not have any impact. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns about this unnecessary and confusing ballot measure.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Street.
Next, we'll hear from Sharon Chen, who is online, followed by Esther Wu, Pyeong Jeang, and Yun Jeang, who I believe are in person and can come up to the staging area.
Sharon, I can see you. Why don't you go ahead and begin?
Oh, okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Chen, and I am here to speak against 2111. I'm a former Microsoft manager and one of the 0.2% of Washingtonians fortunate enough to pay our new capital gains excise tax. Thank you, Chair Berg and members of the House Finance and Senate Ways and Means Committee for the opportunity to testify today. I have spoken out about the need for a more equitable tax code in Washington State because I am interested in living in a place that has clean air, clean water, investments in public schools, and strong communities. To have these things, we have to pay for them. All Washingtonians contribute to important services that state and local governments provide. Shouldn't the wealthiest pay our share? Washington has one of the most upside-down tax codes in the country, and wealthy people like me pay a lower effective tax rate here than in almost any state in the country. And low-income Washingtonians pay a tax rate three times higher than the wealthiest Washingtonians. The legislature should focus on building a tax code that promotes economic security and racial justice, not on poorly-written proposals like Initiative 2111 that will have no demonstrable impact or benefit. I'm glad to hear that Proposal 2111 won't impact the capital gains tax or any existing taxes in Washington State, but it's still unnecessary and doesn't do anything to address real problems facing our state. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Street.
Okay. It looks like Esther Pyeong and Yun are not in person or online, so we'll move to Tad Somerville, Anna Zhu, and Sisk Braden, who may be here in person. If you are, feel free to come up. Otherwise, let's bring them into the Zoom.
Nope, go ahead. All right. See if I move this on here. I believe I'm ready to go. So, my name is Braden Sisk. I was a signature gatherer for Let's Go Washington the past year. One of the most, you know, common questions I would get on I 2111 was, "Why should I sign this when we don't have a state income tax?" And the answer to that is, "You're right. We don't have one." In fact, it's been consistently understood that we lack the constitutional authority to enact one. However, as history has shown, politicians inevitably stack the courts with judges who conveniently interpret statute in whatever way allows them to do what they want to do. So there may be no state income tax today, but that doesn't do anything to prevent a future court from expanding the excise tax determined in the Quinn decision tomorrow. And so, you know, besides that, you know, part of the bargain of living in this state is we don't have a state income tax in lieu of sales tax. Or, again, the reverse is true. And most of the voters I would talk with out there, you know, your constituents would express, "Hey, we can have one or the other, but not both." You know, so often, we hear the phrase that the private sector must pay its fair share, and you know, that's true. But it behooves us to ask at some point, "What's the government's fair share?" Unfortunately, it can be just as greedy as some of the corporate fat cats, and so I would ask respectfully that this legislature affirm that this is a no-income tax state by adopting this initiative as it would be a stopgap, you know, until we're really ready to have a holistic discussion on tax policy. With that, I'll cede my time. Thank you.
And Braden, what's your puppy's name?
His name is Harry.
Okay. Thank you for that. And thank you to Harry as well.
He's quite the trooper, you know?
Thank you. Vice Chair Street.
It looks like Tad and Anna are not online either, so we'll try Ping Lu and Rebecca Zhu, who purportedly are here in person, but since I see no one rising, we will see if they're online. They'll be followed by Misha Wershko and Rainey Cohen, who can come on up. Looks like Ping and Rebecca are not on, not here either, so Rainey and Misha, please proceed.
You go first. Good afternoon. My name is Misha Wershko. I'm the Executive Director of the Washington State Budget and Policy Center. I'm here today in opposition to Initiative 2111. This initiative is a solution in search of a problem that doesn't do anything to address real issues in our communities or with our tax code. I want to reiterate what was shared by nonpartisan staff. The initiative doesn't impact any current statute or policy in Washington State. It's a vaguely reworded statement of what we already know. Washington State doesn't have an income tax. The initiative doesn't have any practical impact and is totally unnecessary. It's well-known that Washington has one of the most inequitable tax systems in the nation, and the legislature should take the opportunity to address the fact that we are funding our public schools and other services disproportionately by those who make the very least. I want to clarify, the official fiscal note and clarifications from nonpartisan staff has also made it clear that the initiative does not impact Washington's capital gains excise tax. The ruling from the Washington State Supreme Court was exceedingly clear that the capital gains tax is, the quote is, "The capital gains tax is appropriately characterized as an excise tax because it is levied on the sale or exchange of capital assets, not on capital assets or gains themselves." Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Rainey.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Rainey Cohen, and I'm here today representing Balance Our Tax Code. We are a coalition of more than 80 organizations across the state, working towards a tax code that supports a way of life that works for all of us. I am testifying in opposition to Initiative 2111. Most of us can agree that we all deserve the things that make for a good life: a warm, dry place to sleep at night, time off if we're sick or need to care for loved ones, and healthy food on the table. But right now, working Washingtonians who are filing and paying their taxes are seeing firsthand what it means to live in the state with the second-most aggressive tax code in the nation. At Balance Our Tax Code, we're glad to hear that Initiative 2111 won't have an effect on the programs that we count on, like paid family medical leave, and it keeps the capital gains excise tax intact so that we can continue to send much-needed funding to childcare and early learning programs and school construction. There's a group of people outside right now rallying to show their support for the $900 million the capital gains tax brought in just this year, but they are also rallying for further investments and a change to our tax code so that the Washingtonians with the lowest incomes can stop carrying the bulk of the burden to fund the programs that so many folks rely on. While 2111 doesn't do anything to change popular programs in our state, the real problem is that it does nothing at all. It's vague, and it does not change anything about Washington's tax code. So for someone who is calculating their tax bill right now and is feeling the weight of how unbalanced their share is, this proposal does absolutely nothing. The legislature has other progressive revenue proposals before you, and it would be our hope that what little time is left of this session is spent considering the things that make real change for people instead of proposals with no impact. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Street.
Thank you. Let's go with Eric Pratt. You never disappoint. You are at many hearings that I'm at, so I'm hoping that you're online.
I am most assuredly online.
Thank you, Eric. This is great.
Thank you, Eric.
This is great. I'm really glad to be here. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. My name is Eric Pratt. I am, I'm in the 24th Legislative District, and I am here in vehement support of I 2111. One thing I've heard in this hearing over and over is that this does nothing, which is interesting. So if this bill does nothing, what it's doing is protecting us from something, something in the future. And if we vote, this body votes against bringing this to the table, then we're actually voting in support of future taxes. And so that's sort of an interesting point that I take away here because none of the testimony in opposition seems to support that it's a bad thing. It's simply a protection. And like so many important enumerations, constitutional and laws, simple, plain language, not vague, but just plain language protections are some of the most important that we utilize on a day-to-day basis. What we want is protection from future taxation. I'm a single father. I don't get any supportive services from the state. I do so on my own income with two kids. If the tax burden increases, that becomes harder and harder for people like me to maintain. And it takes services out of people who may need it. So I urge you to pass this important initiative, this people's initiative, out of this committee, and let's protect the future of Washington from overtaxation burden. Thank you so much. I hope you guys have a great day.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Street.
If we could bring Colleen Rupke in, if she's online, or Lori Lane, or Alan Shrebes. Are any of those three online?
So it seems we have quite a few people who have signed up to testify that are not available to testify. available to testify. And I just saw Lori Lane. I think, Lori, there you are.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Lori. Go ahead.
Wonderful. This sounds great. No state, city, or local jurisdiction in this state may tax an individual's personal income, period. I love that simplicity and the fact that this is coming, not for now, but for in the future, if there's any, in the future. This is very badly needed, and I urge you to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lori. Vice Chair Street.
Do we have Colleen? Or Alan Shreves? Or Jason Howell?
Honestly, I'm going to say if there's folks in the room that have signed up to testify, if you would like to make your presence known to staff, we can try and get you in the last five minutes or so, if you want to come and sit up in one of the front seats. Go ahead. Okay. And ma'am, if you'd like to come up and state your name, and then we can get you off this list, and thank you for traveling today.
Hi. I actually didn't have to travel very far. My name is Desiree Chantel Tolliver. I ran for mayor of Olympia last year in 2023. I would like to say, before anyone goes to Google me and see what the news says, besides being homeless for seven months before then, I graduated from SPS Community College in 2021 as part of the all-Washington team, which means I was in the top 2% of the state. Before that, I worked for State Farm. I was laid off. They left the state. When I was laid off, I suffered from what appeared to be mental health issues, but it was actually a non-cancerous pituitary tumor that mimics bipolar. Those things compounded, despite the fact that during COVID, I worked as an essential worker, a COVID tester. I was never able to find housing for my daughter and I. And when you go into the system, unless you hit this marker of the vulnerability scale of essentially being a sex worker who is addicted to terrible drugs, you are not going to get any help unless you go in there and you advocate for yourself every single day. That is impossible to do when you are living in a car. As I have just said, I am not exemplary because of all these other things. I am more than willing to work and put the work in, but I cannot do anything if I'm unhoused. Right now, Olympia School District is fighting very hard, and a lot of parents are saying they are more than willing to pay more in taxes to keep their schools open. And putting programs like this in place where the local communities cannot make their own decisions about what to do with their taxes is, it's disgusting. Honestly, what people want is not to not be taxed, but they do not want to be taxed without representation, which is something that we constantly get. Sam Hunt, since you are here, I did send you an email.
Ma'am, ma'am, if you could not, no, 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 we're not going to do that.
Okay. Well, I'm not saying in a rude way. I just wanted to say, I appreciate that he is retiring. You were the first person to make my mom feel recognized as a person within the United States.
If you could speak to the bill and...
I am speaking to the bill. A lot of times, people are unheard by their representatives. Honestly, what is happening even within Olympia is that the big corporations have been giving tax cuts and not have to pay their impact fees, and now the cost of those impact fees go back onto the people who already live in Olympia, who've already been here, who have even moved here for opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony.
Family has always taught me about hard work, and people do not have an opportunity for hard work or to make decisions for their community if it is taken out of their hands.
Thank you for your testimony. Vice Chair Street.
We are still looking for online testifiers.
Vice Chair Street, if you could read the names of the folks that we're looking for.
We are looking for Roger Case, Delmar Eldred, Amy Woodruff, Monica Spence, Dominique France, Michael Carroll, Debbie Sweker, Adriana Roman, Cheryl McBride, Michael Demanti, Selena Evans, Karen Snyder, Tammy Schmoltzer, Angela Fowler, Eileen Warner, Robert Ford, Jeanette McKenzie, James Kane.
I think we have a winner. I just saw it. And your lottery ticket is up. Yes. I'm not going to give away who it is until I actually see him pop on the screen, but someone has presented said ticket, and I believe they will be testifying. Oh, come on now. I was feeling lucky, but they're not accepting. Okay, look, Robert, you're out there. Accept the promotion. Get your two minutes.
I believe that is Robert Ford that we are looking to accept the promotion. I will continue through names until they do. Harold Seal, Hui Su, Jennifer Valeska, Rick Isaacson, Janine Petershagen, William Coaster, Sumed Bard, Ryan Drinkwine.
That's a real name.
Phonetically, what lots of people like I do. Shang Jin, Scott Clacken, Stephen Peak, Blaine Badejo, Matthew Smith, Jiang Chuan He, Choi Ji Chu, Shan Gao, Charles Green, Jian Yu, Jan Davis, Commissioner Amanda McKinney. Ooh, we got a winner. All right.
Oh, thank you, Amanda. You are the winner of the golden ticket. Please turn on, turn on your, thank you. Go for it.
Well, yes, I thank you, Commissioner Amanda McKinney, and it's helpful because I am representing nearly 300,000 people in Yakima County and a lot of people across the state who signed in favor of these initiatives, and I am a strong supporter of Initiative 2111. I would comment to really providing some, some cover to you, which I hope is happy news. There was some talk in the initial introduction by staff of concern that we wouldn't want to possibly adopt another government agency's law. I would just remind this legislation that you have done so numerous times, most recently in 2020, where we have adopted the vehicle emission standards from California. There are often conversations in this legislature that would tie us to the standards specifically related to green energy or alternative energy from other states. So you can be sure that tying ourselves to federal tax code is certainly not, would be considered to be very similar to what you've already done, tying us to California, in some cases Oregon. The other thing I would just speak to is that the reason for the initiative has been pretty clear from those people speaking today in opposition, which is that we need to tax more. And so I think that the people who've signed up in support of this initiative and who have done so for the several decades previously, who are saying they don't want to be taxed anymore, have sent a clear message. Don't tax our income. And so for the proponents to be saying that you need to spend your time finding a way to tax more income and be more creative in ways to tax our income, that is what is driving people to be coming to Olympia, going to state fairs, signing up for initiatives that they're supportive of. And I know, providing polling results that have prompted you to have this hearing, we're all aware of it. So I would just really encourage you to listen to all the voices across Washington State now and going back decades. Send a clear statement. Let's adopt the federal income tax version and make sure that we no longer have to be fearful of income taxes in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, we will conclude the public hearing. I do want to, yeah, I was, yep, got that under control. So before we end, I do want to announce that you can provide written testimony to the committee within the next 24 hours. I also want to announce the positions testifying pro and con, who are both here to test, signed up to testify in person as well as not testifying. For our pro positions, we have 181 people who signed up pro to testify. We have 6,008 who signed up pro not testifying. We have 24 signed up testifying con, and we have 649 signed up not testifying con. For other, we have eight signed up to testify as other and 17 not testifying as other. And with that, our joint meeting is adjourned.